Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September tenth, two thousand and nineteen school committee meeting here at the high school. Just a reminder, these meetings are audio and video recorded. All is made in order. So introduction, Shumala.
Sharon Fairbys.
Rob Mullen.
Julie Bresticchi.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Brian McManus.
Anthony Tenerola.
Paul Mitchell.
Becky Stanner.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
A.J. Moore, Student Representative.
Good job, buddy.
Thanks, Dan.
That was awesome.
So barring any object as well, social media this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice, nice job. You can call him to your homework now.
Homework, I'm good.
You're gonna grab that?
Yep.
Thank you, Johnny. I'm sure Mr. Willis assigned some meeting.
Thanks. I'll be taking it.
Yeah.
Can you leave me plenty of questions for the committee? Okay, enjoy the pizza. Thank you very much.
Let me spread the image.
So I resume the, the, our new products.
Number six.
Number six. Subcommittee update.
Yeah, that would be me. So, Policy Subcommittee has enjoyed some, uh, nice time off from our meetings last spring, so we're gonna be, uh, back, uh, back at it starting next month. We'll be hitting the periodic review, uh, process first with nine annual renewed policies that we'll take a look at at our next meeting. But we do have, uh, three or four that I'd like to just quickly highlight and bring to your attention that we're gonna be working on, um, over the next month or two. Um, we're gonna be looking at drafting a public comments, um, policy, a transportation policy. We're trying to, uh, be proactive and meet the needs of the ever-changing families that we have, um, in today's world, and so we wanna make sure that we don't have any language in there that's, that's jamming up, um, people who have shared custody and, and, and different family configurations. So we're gonna take a look at our transportation policy and make sure it's, it's family-friendly. We're gonna take a good look at both of our fundraising policies, particularly in light of the fact that crowdfunding is a really big, um, reality out there, and we would like to make sure if we're gonna take advantage of that type of platform, that we have checks and balances in place to do it carefully and well. And finally, the other policy with it is known in the books now that we're gonna take a look at drafting as a draft policy for animals in schools, uh, particularly around service animals and therapy animals, to make sure we're proactive in those two areas as well. So that's what's coming up in the next month or two for Policy Subcommittee, and we will be meeting before our next school committee meeting.
You said our annual ones.
Will happen at the next meeting, yep.
Great. Person now. Uh, Mr. Chair, we have, uh, two personnel actions. We have a location on maternity leave for Nicole Young, TES School Adjustment Council, and two resignations, Emily Hearn and Cody DeVoe, both from, uh, two-plus years of service to the school. So thank you for your service to Emily and Cody.
Number eight, business.
Uh, School Building Committee update. I'm gonna turn this over to the Chair, Mr. Terrera, of the School Building Committee. My, my update, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, as we go.
Yes, I am actually the co-chair.
Co-chair, sorry.
Hi, everyone, it's Rob, uh, of the Board of Selectmen, he's the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. We met two weeks ago. Everyone was in attendance on the school committee, which was School Building Committee, uh, which, which was good. We threw out a bunch of ideas, um, asked for some follow-up questions as far as the feasibility study, how it's going to work, uh, the direction we're taking. We are completely up to date on everything that MSBS has asked us for, MSBA has asked us for. All the paperwork has been submitted to this point, which is good. We are meeting tomorrow night. I would like to take this opportunity, though, to remind everyone, there's a lot of questions about whether or not this is actually a good time, um, where we are today. And, uh, I'd like to remind everyone that this has been a nine-year project. We have submitted for the last nine years, um, to get brought into this program, and we have been. So, it's a good opportunity for Tinsborough. We need the middle school. There were seventy school districts that the MSBA went out and looked at, walked through their facilities, including Tinsborough. They chose ten, or twelve, 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 um, new projects, and Tinsborough was one of them. So, MSBA is telling us, we need a new school. So, um, I hope we get everyone's support. We're meeting again tomorrow night, uh, to discuss in detail a little more of the feasibility study and how that's gonna work, and, um, more information to follow. So, does that sound to you like that?
I would just say that, uh, you know, I think hopefully Wednesday we can introduce a new website that's been created that will be shared with the School Building Committee tomorrow night. Uh, pending their approval, we'll have that website live, uh, Wednesday morning. Uh, that'll answer some questions for taxpayers and really provide an overview with a lot of important information, um, and it just kinda lays out the facts that we're saying. So, um, look forward to that.
I would just like that. I'd like to thank everyone who volunteered to be on this committee, um, whether you're on a committee or just a personal resident of the town that wants to be involved. So thank you to everyone for the time that they're putting into this.
Uh, A B, I'll take that, uh, Mr. Chair, if you, if you don't mind. The, uh, the TES Culver update in traffic pattern, a communication went home Sunday afternoon from my office with, uh, with PDF of maps, uh, and I know that Principal Kavanaugh sent home a communication today to talk about the TES Culver project. As everyone in this room knows, this has been a six- or seven-year project. As everyone in this room heard, three months ago that it was gonna be done by August twenty-fourth, um, construction happened, and that didn't happen. So, uh, so the project will officially break ground on Thursday of this week. For the next two weeks thereafter, from the twelfth to about October second or third, and again, we're being very conservative in our projection here. We think it, it'll be done a lot quicker than what, what we're putting out there, but to be safe, we're gonna, we're gonna say October third. The entrance to TES will be an entrance only, and we'll use the access road to be an exit only for the next couple of weeks until this project is done. Uh, to, to allow two-way traffic and, or pay detail officers to have a one-lane road, uh, it's not cost-efficient nor is it as effective for the workers. They need the time and space to get the work done. So, uh, that communication has gone out. Uh, and worked with, um, the Police Department, uh, about the lights at Flint's Corner as well, um, which is a, a great consideration, um, and they're going to assign as much manpower as possible to this. So my understanding is when this project starts Thursday, we'll have one of our school staff members working at, uh, directing buses and parent flow traffic. We'll have a detailed cop, a police officer on campus. We'll also have our SROs, three SROs, available to direct traffic and inform parents, and we'll have the sector cruiser at the Flint's Corner light, uh, which will be able to control the traffic signal to allow flow from Dunstable Road, Red Gate to Dunstable, to keep that traffic pattern moving. So, uh, we'll get a, a good sense of, of what it looks like Thursday, um, and make adjustments as needed and communicate those adjustments. But as far as communication, I went out to everyone in the district on Thursday to carry follow-up, keep you on specific email today, um, about, uh, potential impacts. So again, i- i- it's an inconvenience for a couple of weeks. I get that. Uh, nobody designed it this way, it's just the way the timing felt. Yep.
Question?
Yes.
Now that we've, we're facing this issue, this challenge, um, over the next several years, do you think it might be a good idea to start looking at ideas for additional aggressors from the property? See if there's anything else we might do in case we need to do something similar in the future?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a great question. Um, I think we'll assess it Thursday and see, you know, how, um, disruptive that flow pattern is. Uh, it's not a bad idea. I don't know where we'd go, uh, maybe, you know, whether it's something on Otappalooza or...
That's...
Or maybe, I don't know which one it is out there, but one of the worst streets. Potentially, it's not, it's not, it's not a bad, uh, consideration. I don't know what the cost is behind all that, of course, but...
Sure. Of course. I, I mean, hopefully we won't have to, you know, at least looking at it so in case this ever the need again.
Right. Yeah, thanks. So we'll know what Thursday, we'll see how it goes. I will update the committee with an email on Thursday just to kinda say, who's, who's gonna be on.
I have to say, my superintendent goals. So we met with Dr. Flanagan, Gary tonight. We do this goal, there's three, do your goals for this year. We voted three zeros to improve the goals, and we'd like to send it to the committee and ask you to approve also. So I want to see the motion.
If you'd like to do the whole view, I'll do a quick overview of the goals, if that's okay, in form of me. So, so the three, the three big projects this year, I think, one is, one is to update our strategy for district improvement. It really does inform this committee of what direction we're going as a school system. Yeah, as I said to the Subcommittee, things, things like full-day kindergarten, that was in our strategy. Uh, the need for a librarian at the elementary school, that came out of our strategy. The need for social-emotional help at the middle school, that came out of our strategy. Those are all positions that this school committee funded over the past three years. So that really does inform and drive the, the direction of the district. So I wanna make sure that that remains as current as possible, and I wanna reach back out to parents and community stakeholders to solicit their input. The second goal is about teaching and learning. Uh, we've talked as a committee about, uh, about accountability and what does it look like, and really start to look for evidence in where the rubber hits the road and where our, where our student outcomes. So, uh, Mark Satter and myself put an extended leadership team protocol where we're gonna talk with admin team monthly about teacher evaluation. That's what it comes down to, teaching in the classroom. The more effective our teachers are, the better our kids do. So, uh, so we need to hold our, our principals accountable for the amount of feedback and the quality of the feedback, uh, and then we're gonna follow up with that and look for evidence. Uh, we can make all the recommendations in the world, but if we're not circling back to find that it's actually being put in place, uh, then that's on us. We're not, we're not doing the full job. So, so that's the second goal in terms of the extended leadership team. And the third goal, um, is MSBA, uh, the amount of work that'll, that will go there. I think it's important that, that, you know, I take a leadership position there and, and really do the necessary legwork that I can to inform the School Building Committee to the best of our ability and provide them the information that they're looking for so that hopefully we can have a, a positive outcome, uh, to tell me vote, uh, in November. I believe in November at this point is what we're talking about from that committee, so... So those are three big goals.
Questions? I do have one. Would it be possible to, well, let me preface this by saying, when we sit down and we do, um, year review each year, uh, sometimes it's hard to, you know, go back and...
Think about your goals.
And where we were at any different time of the year. Do the other members think it might be a good idea if maybe once a month or once a quarter, we have a line item in our agenda that is update on superintendent goals? So that we're talking about it regularly, and then it's in the minutes, and then so where, when we have to go and, and do the review again, all we have to do is bring up those minutes and see that, uh, just as a reminder, uh, just a suggestion, just a question out to everyone.
Yeah, so, so I neglected to bring that up. We did do, we did talk about that, uh, in, in our meeting. Thanks for bringing it up. So last year I did the, the monthly updates and provided those to the school committee so that you were informed where we were on the acts items, as well as we had the other section in there about other pertinent issues. Uh, what we discussed was, let's see what comes out of our meeting in two weeks when we bring, uh, the consultant in, Dr. Ash, uh, and see if we wanna continue with that or if he may introduce something new that would, uh, help the committee better evaluate me. Uh, I'm happy to do anything that the committee wants, uh, I just wanna make sure that I don't start something now and we're gonna shift to two weeks. So we'll, we'll look at the twenty-fourth and go from there, but it's, it's a good point.
One other question is, on the teacher evaluation goal, we, we worked with the union to understand, you know, get them sort of on, on onboard, but understand what's going on and your purpose of it.
So, great question. Uh, when we crafted the evaluation instrument, that was actually interest-based bargaining at its finest. It was the union administrative team sitting in one room with a consultant who acted as mediator, uh, and we hammered out the entire evaluation document together in one room. Uh, it was a long process. It was a tedious process, at some points contentious process, but at the end of the day, I think we all have an instrument that we are confident and comfortable in. It's a matter of, our focus, the focus of my goal, is to make sure our administrators are maximizing that instrument to improve teaching and learning in the classroom. So we're gonna have quality conversations about the type of feedback we're giving, the type of, uh, input and research that we're using to inform instructional practices, as well as what data are we looking at, and, and is that incorporated in the evaluation? So, um, does anyone...
No, I just, for the past couple of years, we spent a lot of time at the admin level calibrating, uh, writing styles, the way the feedback is presented in writing or face-to-face meetings, um, everything from timelines to using the rubric language appropriately. So we've spent a lot of quality time calibrating the how and not necessarily calibrating the out, the outcome on the other end. So this year, we're gonna be goal-oriented and outcome-oriented. So when we meet with the teams, it's gonna be real discussions about value-added. So now you've gone out, you've had conversations with teachers about their practice, what you saw in the classroom, and we would like you to share out the evidence of those conversations and say, yes, teacher X changed a practice or improved the skill set. So that's the next step, is that positive data collection.
And what's the evidence to say that?
Right.
So that's on the administrator's side, but on the teacher's side, it's the response
Yes.
Feedback.
Yes.
If, you know, if they're just getting the evaluation, it's going in one ear and out the other, it doesn't, you know, the evaluation tool doesn't really matter.
Right.
Correct.
So, so that's, that's the purpose of the monthly meetings, to see who we evaluated, how many times we evaluated them, and are we seeing trends and patterns?
Okay.
And how we address that.
I would, I'd put out a motion to accept Dr. Flanagan's goals at this time, if, uh, everyone is willing.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrier six zero zero?
Thank you.
Nine seed, homeschool applications received. Homeschool with, um, Cheryl and Chris McNally, the students in grades three sixty-nine. Candace and Gary Lindsay, with a student in eighth grade. Emily and Classen and Christopher Briggs, with a student in grade three. Jill and Paul Mercia, the student in grade nine. Heather and Christopher Black, with students in grades one, two, five, seven, nine, eleven. Kristen and Kenneth Russell, students in grades six and eight. Their homeschools.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, all their paperwork is in, and, uh, I got it for...
Excellent. December to meeting schedule adjustments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to know if this committee would be, would entertain, uh, amending our December calendar for meeting. Uh, the reason I ask is specific to the high school and awards night and high school travel plans. As you recall, when Principal Og was here a few weeks ago, we approved two trips to give kids the world, one in November, one in December. Given, uh, various open house and release schedules that, that are in place in the district, by approving those dates, it allows for one night for the high school to host a winter awards night, oh, I'm sorry, fall sports awards night. Fall sports award is probably our, our biggest attended awards night of the year. It's important to the kids, it's important to parents. Right now, we have to schedule it on a Friday night. I'm concerned that that would really decrease attendance on both parents' and students' part, uh, and I, I, I'm hoping that the committee can be flexible enough to, to adjust your schedule. All our principals know to hold the first and third Tuesday harmless, no events happen on that. So if we could move our December meeting from December third and seventeenth to December tenth, that would enable the high school to hold an awards night on Tuesday night, which is normally when they have it during the week at some point. So that's the rationale behind it. And again, it's December, if we move it to December tenth, at that point, the, the committee could just go with one meeting in December.
It only takes a, uh, three days to call a meeting, is that what, to advertise for a meeting if there was an issue?
Yes, yep.
So...
Well, it'll be forty-eight hours to post, yes, yep.
So I have no problem with, you know, trying to work around all the schedules and timings and all the different things that are going on.
Right.
It's fine with me.
I'll make a motion to, uh, change our December calendar to one meeting on December tenth.
One second.
Discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrier six zero zero?
I think that just made a lot of athletes and parents happy, so thank you for that.
Excellent.
We, we like to do that, we like to make turns, yeah.
Yes.
Absolutely. Finance, Mr. Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For signing of bills, there were twelve bill warrants presented to the committee tonight. I do have them back all signed. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts for tonight. Also in your drive is a single warrant that was signed by Mr. Mullin as the single signer back on August twenty-seventh. That warrant, um, number, account, and amount is in your drive as well. Signing of payroll, none tonight, we'll, we'll do them, like, catch up at your next meeting. And just one other note I'd like to mention, uh, the solar panels on the high school are up and running. Uh, they've been running for at least two weeks now. Select Energy has been a little lax in getting me the actual link where I can see the production. I met with, um, members from Select Energy on Thursday, where they gave myself and Mr. Pena the, the keys to the solar panel, basically, the book, the book with all the information for us to have on site, uh, they gave me all of the protocols for it. Did share the link with me so that I could see it on the screen, on their screen, but haven't given me that link yet. I did speak with Dr. Flanagan about, uh, potentially getting some reps from Select into one of your October meetings, um, just so they can talk about educational opportunities as well as information that we, uh, might be able to share both onsite electronically with the public. So, look forward to them coming in October.
Well, what would be our estimated cost savings for this year?
So, we've signed a contract, um, for nine cents, uh, per kilowatt hour, and that does not have to be delivered by National Grid to the site. We're currently paying about nine point nine cents to our supplier, and then probably another fourteen cents to National Grid to bring it to us. So, it's potential, some good potential savings there, um, if, if it's sized for this building, which they try to size it just a little bit small for planned operations, uh, just so that we're not overproducing and pushing out into the grid. So, um, I'm sure the Select reps, uh, when they come to the meeting will be able to give you a little bit more information in terms of production versus, um, historical. And if, in, in the book, they're gonna just chart, chart a point out as to what they anticipate, uh, production output's gonna be, uh, you know, all of the monitoring is there for that, for us to see any issues, for them to see any issues, and, um, I look forward to actually seeing them present to you, uh, at your meeting.
Quite frankly, I'm kinda disappointed in the, the way this is being, uh, handled through Select, and, you know, they've had all summer, they, they've been waiting, fighting around, waiting for National Grid to turn it on, and they could've had all these websites set up and whatever else taken care of while they were waiting. It's a habit of some of these companies to just wait until, you know, until you start, complaining. And I think it'd be, uh, incumbent on this committee to sort of write a quick letter to them saying that we're disturbed at the way that this has gone so far and want to get some more information and get somebody in here now, is my opinion. You know, there should be a, a way to get on a website, there should be a meter out in the hall here to show what's being produced. There's no reason that those things should, couldn't have been done in, in the, uh, time that it's taken to, to do these things. Companies like this, I deal with them all the time, they, until somebody starts to complain, uh, they just go on to the next project. And that's what's happening right now.
And I would agree with Paul, we were actually supposed to have some sort of an educational tool on the wall that we could use, um, and we don't have that currently.
I would ask if the superintendent had just drafted a short letter to, I'm telling all the school committees, uh, concerned with the service and the, the way they're, this project is being finalized and turned on, that we wanna get it accomplished and accomplish now.
Sure. If that's the willing type, if you wanna take a vote, I'm happy to do that, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, uh, ask the superintendent to draft a letter of concern to the, the Select Energy regarding the solar project.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I'm wondering if we can modify the motion minimally and say, pending the Chair's approval of the letter, I can send it?
Sure.
Will that happen to the school committee?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrier six zero zero? Any other questions for Mr. Seaman? Okay. Move on to the school preview discussion. Surveying?
Uh, congratulations to KJ for student of the month.
Just beat us to it.
I'd like just, like to welcome everybody back and, uh, hope everyone has a wonderful year.
So tomorrow was an early release professional development day. We have some great sessions planned, and I know it's important that the committee knows, um, how we're using those days, and most importantly, the parents understand that we're, we're spending some quality time. Sarah Lewenzic has spent the past couple of months working very closely with McLean Hospital to put together a great program tomorrow called Deconstructing Stigma. Two full comprehensive programs, one on this campus, one on the elementary school, on, um, supporting students who are dealing with anxiety, stress, depression, and trauma in their lives. And the sad truth is that's a growing population all across the country and throughout the world. So, uh, we need to make sure our, our teachers have the right tools to deal with that. Um, so that's kind of the heavy PD that's happening tomorrow. Um, also, our, um, related service providers are getting professional development through UMass Medical Center in Medicaid progress notes and expansion programming so that we can make sure we're doing right by people who need those services. And our, uh, biology teachers at the high school are very excited that we have, uh, the rep coming in from our new, the adopted program tomorrow to give professional development in the biology program. So that's all happening during the early release tomorrow.
KJ?
I don't really have anything to say right now. I'm all set, thank you.
I, uh, just wanna point again to the work that's being done on the, preparing for our proposal on the middle school. Uh, a lot's going into that. It's really important to our students and, um, you know, so more to come on that, um, and, you know, to the community, please, you know, be ready to, um, absorb some of the information and inform yourselves, um, to make the decision that you think is best for our community.
I also wanna, you know, stress that the, the middle school project is a big thing for the community. Getting fifty percent of the cost of that back from the state is, uh, essential in a type of project like this, but, uh, that doesn't come for free. There's a page of, I think it's thirty-two rules and regulations you have to follow to get that money back. That's a, uh, you know, that's why we're pushing these things to, there's timelines and, uh, things that need to be addressed to be able to get that, that reimbursement. So, I wanna make sure everybody knows that we want the money, but, uh, there's reasons why things have to go the way they go.
Congratulations, KJ, first of all.
Thank you.
And if we just could update on our foreign exchange students, do, do they make it? Are they...
Doing great.
In our buildings, they're adapting well, everything's good?
My exchange program is wide and thriving.
Very nice. And we have three right now?
We have four, sir.
Nice.
From what countries?
Right on the spot, put 'em right on the spot.
Spain, Canada, and Germany, I believe. Spain, Canada, Germany. I didn't know it's Spain, Canada, Germany.
And what grade they're in? Oh, man.
Nine, eleven, eleven, I believe.
Awesome. That's a great program. It's bringing, bringing revenue to Tinsborough as well, so Tinsborough Public Schools, so that's a good thing. That is it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, schools, schools are back, uh, we're, we're hitting our stride here. The, the first week is over, all the kinks have worked out, and, uh, we'll see how the things go Thursday with the Culver project, but, uh, we're back at it, and, uh, it, it's funny back in schools.
Excellent. KJ, congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, the block party was a tremendous success. Thank you to the right committee. Sophomore, we had a dunk tanker, we had Jen Spanhouse, the nurse at TES, and Zach Richall from high school. During the time, they sat in the tank and got themselves wet and helped us resolve money for the girls and sophomore. So, thank you to those two. That's it.
We have no need for executive session.
Any questions to adjourn?
I will second that.
Discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrier six zero zero? We are adjourned.